So, good evening. I would like to call to order the regular monthly meeting of the Newport News School Board for Tuesday, August 14th, 2018. On behalf of the members of the school board and the superintendent, I welcome you, present and those who are watching, our quorum is present to transact the business of the school division. First, I would like to announce that we have two board members that have excused absences, Ms. Shelley Simon and Mr. John Ely. We're going to start our meetings as we normally do. And here to do the honors is our 2018-2019 student representatives to the school board, Ms. Maria Jones, representing Woodside High School. Welcome. Ms. Jones was selected to serve as this year's student representative to the school board by members of the superintendent's advisory group, Education, which we call SAG, whose membership, Sage, I'm sorry, which we call Sage, whose membership represents each of the high schools within the district. Ms. Jones is a member of the citywide SCA, Vice President of the Tri-M Honor Society, and serves as Section Leader in the Woodside Chamber Orchestra, among many other activities. Ms. Jones, will you please come forward to give us the pledge and invocation?
If everybody could please stand for the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. I will now read a poem I found by Shawnee Kelly, and I love it, so I would like to share it with you guys. One word can spark a moment. One flower can wake the dream. One tree can start a forest. One bird can herald spring. One smile can bring a friendship. One hand clasp can lift a soul. One star can guide a ship at sea. One cheer can obtain a goal. One vote can change a nation. One sunbeam can lift a room. One candle wipes out darkness, and one laugh will conquer gloom. One look can change two lives, and one kiss can make love bloom. One step must start each journey. One word must start each prayer. One hope can raise our spirits. One touch can show you care. One voice can speak with wisdom. One heart can know what's true. One life can make a difference. One life is me and you. Thank you.
Let's give another hand to Ms. Jones for that lovely poem. Again, we would like to also recognize Ms. Jones' family and school family who are present in the audience. If you're here, please stand to be recognized. Is there anyone from her school? There you are. Again, thank you for your support. So, we're going to move the agenda. And next we'll have is a board recognition. Mr. Superintendent, do we have some?
Yes, sir. I'm pleased, very pleased, to announce that we have two recognitions this evening, both to our business community, our business and finance folks. The Association of School Business Officials International has recognized Newport News for a meritorious budget award for fiscal year 2017 and 2018, once again, for meritorious performance. And also, the Association of School Business Officials have provided the Certificate of Excellence in Financial Reporting to Newport News City Public Schools for a comprehensive annual financial report for fiscal year 2017. These are very notable accomplishments for our folks who develop, do our budget work behind the scenes, who present that budget to the community and also to our city officials. They should be commended by being recognized by these two organizations for their fine work. And at this time, I would like to come up front and acknowledge those individuals. If you'd come forward. Yes, sir.
As Dr. Parker indicated, we are pleased this month to recognize two members of our very own business office staff. Over the past several years, Newport News Public Schools' budget development process has focused on gathering input and identifying ways to reduce spending to ensure the school division's financial resiliency. The budget document has evolved as well. It is user-friendly and understandable, and it includes more historical and statistical information. The transformation is noteworthy, and of course, as you heard, award-winning. Newport News Public Schools' 2017-2018 budget has earned the Association of School Business Officials International Meritorious Budget Award for Excellence in Budget Presentation. Joining us this evening to accept this recognition on behalf of the business staff and the school division is our Budget Director, Scarlett Minto. Ms. Minto? The 2017-2018 budget was reviewed by a committee of association members and outside reviewers with experience in public-sector budgeting. To earn the Meritorious Budget Award, the budget document has to meet stringent criteria. It has to be clear and understandable, and it must include up-to-date budget practices and demonstrate sound fiscal management practices and effective use of educational resources. The team reviewed and commented that Newport News Public Schools' budget represent a professionally-prepared document, which includes a wealth of information in graphic and narrative form. It represents a quality presentation of excellent data useful to the average reader. Further, the district is to be congratulated for their continuous efforts to pursue the meritorious, easy for me to say this evening, Meritorious Budget Award and to continuously improve their budget document. This is the eighth consecutive year that Newport News Public Schools has earned this national award. So, Ms. Minto, please share our acknowledgement with your staff and the others in the office, and congratulations for earning this award again. Thank you very much. We'll take it at the break. We're going to take the picture at the break. Thank you. The school division's business department is also responsible for providing sound financial management of the school division's resources. One of its most important duties is financial reporting. As a public institution, the financial reporting must be understandable, transparent, and concise. This evening, we're pleased to share that the Association of School Business Officials International has again recognized Newport News Public Schools for its annual financial report. ASBO awarded the school division a Certificate of Excellence in Financial Reporting for its comprehensive financial report for fiscal year 2017. Accepting this recognition on behalf of the business office is Accounting Analyst Kimberly Powell. Ms. Powell?
The Certificate of Excellence is the highest recognition for school district financial operations offered by ASBO, and it's only awarded to school districts that meet or exceed program standards. The financial report was judged by an impartial professional panel of auditors. The auditors noted that our financial report is thorough and detailed, and it presents the school division's financial condition and exceeds the generally-accepted accounting principles. The report is recognized for providing a variety of information, including financial statements, supportive schedules, statistics, and narrative explorations. The awards program is designed to encourage school districts to provide the public with fair representation of all funds and financial transactions. Newport News Public Schools is just one of 553 districts across the country to earn this award. And this is also the eighth year that the school district has earned the comprehensive annual financial report, has earned this award for the comprehensive annual financial report. So, again, we congratulate you and the rest of the staff. Thank you very much.
Again, we want to congratulate our colleagues in the business office for another job well-done. At this time, we would like to take a break so that our honorees may leave if they choose to do so. Our viewing audience will have an opportunity to view this month's school board spotlight, so we'll stand in recess for about five minutes. Thank you.
While studying their unit on planets, 4th graders at Newsome Park Elementary did everything just short of traveling the galaxy themselves. Through hands-on and technology-driven learning experiences, students received an in-depth introduction to our solar system that was out of this world. Since Newsome Park is home to the Math, Science, and Technology Magnet Program, advanced technology played an important role in learning about the nine planets. But what made the exploration so thorough was integrating science with English standards and allowing a number of resource teachers to round out the collaborative effort. Spearheaded by STEM lead Jennifer Barker, students first selected a planet to investigate. In the library and STEM lab, students were able to research and begin writing about their planets while also focusing on the unique visual characteristics. An interactive NearPod lesson allowed students to compare the size of their planets with others. Students used this knowledge to work in collaborative teams when actually building the surface of their planet. Art teacher Liz Vaughn helped students create the physical surface of the terrestrial planets while recycled materials were used to simulate the look of the gaseous planets. During the final STEM challenge, students were able to simulate an exploration of their planet's surface by operating drones and robots. The instructional STEM team trained students to operate small drones, which they used to explore the gaseous planets by hovering over them. Instructional technology coach Jonathan Gohler taught students control Sphero robots to maneuver across the rocky surface of the terrestrial planets. Augmented reality cards allowed all students to virtually interact with each planet from a unique perspective. By utilizing the various skills and expertise of different educators, Newsome Park students received a comprehensive learning experience, allowing them to thoroughly and creatively explore the galaxy around us. Since 2008, middle school sports in Newport News Public Schools have been wowing spectators and giving student athletes the opportunity to hone their game before advancing into the competitive world of high school varsity sports. And it all started a decade ago with the first middle school basketball season. Fast break to this year's tournament, where four different schools advanced to the championship game. Dozier and Hines girls teams were used to being the bridesmaids since neither team had ever won the basketball crown. With a stifling defense that kept the Dragons ahead the entire game, the Dozier girls finally earned their bride status. Dozier's girls lost in the title game the past two years, so the third time was a charm. Coach Brian Scott is excited for Dozier's future with a strong group of 6th and 7th graders ready to defend their very first girls' basketball title. The top-ranked Gildersleeve and Passage Boys teams had never met in the tournament before, but since both teams play in the North Division, they match up twice during the regular season. Passage pulled out to an early lead before Gildersleeve closed the gap at halftime. Both teams put up a valiant effort in the third quarter before Passage pulled ahead in the fourth quarter and held on for the Panthers' second title in five years. Coach Terrence Crawley enjoyed watching his players bond as brothers through the course of the season and has high hopes for his younger players next season. Woodside High School students joined the James River Association to gain real-world field expertise right on the water. This meaningful watershed educational experience was funded through a grant from the Chesapeake Bay Trust. After a thorough safety course, advanced placement biology, and marine biology students paddled down the Powhatan Creek near Jamestown Settlement to explore the plant and wildlife found among the brackish waters. Taking water samples from this site, along with samples from other tributaries along the James River, Woodside's biology students were able to analyze the water quality in their lab at school. Science teachers Meg Wiggins and Jennifer Wade guided their students as they used a variety of equipment to determine the overall health of our local waterways. By sharing this data with the James River Association, Woodside students were able to gain real-world skills in a practical setting while assisting the JRA with their goal to promote conservation and responsible stewardship of Virginia's largest river. Every day, our schools do an amazing job of teaching the whole student. By moving beyond academic success, teachers and professional school counselors focus on developing important life skills in our youth, such as respect, thoughtfulness, and kindness. Students at Charles Elementary took these lessons to heart and decided to spread kindness throughout the city. During the school year, Stacy Wilson's 5th graders secretly left Decorated Rocks with messages of kindness in Kimberly Rogers' 3rd grade classroom. This simple act left a lasting impact on the 3rd graders and sparked an idea about spreading kindness to complete strangers. With the help of school counselor Nancy Peterson, Charles created Kindness Rocks, a traveling box of kindness to visit different elementary schools in Newport News. Before winter break in 2017, Charles students packed a box full of paper rocks ornamented with words of kindness and encouragement. The box also contained a large painted rock, so each school could add their name to the traveling stone. At each school, classrooms or student clubs gathered together when the Kindness Rocks container arrived. They then read the kind words that were addressed to them on the paper rocks and decorated new colorful rocks to send on to the next school. In just a few months, Kindness Rocks visited nine schools and inspired hundreds of students at each school to pass on words of kindness to others before arriving back at Charles in early June. The 3rd and 5th grade classes that initiated Kindness Rocks were excited to see all the inspirational messages that will return to them, along with the large stone now ordained with multiple schools that are making a concentrated effort to be kind to others.
Welcome back, and hope you enjoy the school board spotlight. During our meetings, we provide time for the public to address the board. These are scheduled at the earlier part of the meeting and then toward the end of the minute. The board considers this an opportunity to listen to your comments. Please understand that we consider your concerns, and we'll get back to you at a later date. Just want to reemphasize that, well, the board, at the time you're commenting, we will not be addressing your comments up here in the public. And we will, but we will get back to you as soon as possible. And so, we ask that you compile our three-minute rule. When you come up, the green light comes on. When the yellow light signals, it means that you have 30 seconds remaining. And then, when you hear the buzzard and the red light, we ask that you were to end your comments. Thank you for acknowledging our rules. That said, we do have some cards with us this evening. And so, as your name is heard, please come up, and the mic will be yours. First, we have James Stansel. Good evening, Mr. Stansel.
How you doing today? Welcome to new school board president. Let me make you aware of something, though. Seventy percent of students in the average high school in America are C students, all right? That needs to be addressed, and especially in our system because I did a Freedom of Information request here, and everybody below a 3.2 is over 70% of your students. So, what I try to recommend is that you create more programs for those 70% of those students, all right? Instead of sending them over to Oyster Point, just kicking them out the system, which I know when they get in a fight, that's what you do. But funny thing happened to me. I run into a guy, and I run into this Career Technology Center program in West Virginia this guy tells me about. Now, this guy, living in West Virginia, took a welding program out there and got a job at the shipyard. You know what dawned on me? I got all these C students running around the city committing crimes and doing everything else, and we ain't offering them nothing but a high school diploma. This program is called the 13th Year Tuition Program. Nine months after these kids in this county finished school, they're afforded the opportunity to attend this program scholarship-free, all trade programs. Let me give you an idea of some of the programs. Carpentry, welding, medical office, machine tool technology, something that's needed, electrical technician industry. Oh, and get this, they don't even give you a placement test to get in these courses. Now, you got nine months after you graduate after high school to sign up for these programs, and as long as you maintain your attendance and you were a C student that graduated from high school, this program is entirely free, okay? So, I gotta meet a guy that's moved all the way from here and took a job at the shipyard as a welder when I got all these C students running around here that can't even get in the shipyard, okay? So, this is why I bring this to your attention. And I'm going to leave you a copy of this for you to review. The one thing I like about this nine months after school is like a gap year program, which gives the student a time to evaluate his life and figure out he ain't making no money. So, then maybe he'll sign up for something like this if we can put it centrally located, all right? Let's keep that in mind. Now, if you do start this, make it centrally located. I don't want to have the people in Denby having to make a two-hour bus ride to this place like they do if they go over to Thomas Nelson, okay? We close Christopher Newport now, so we don't have a community college in our city, so we can't adjust educational curriculum after our kids get out of high school. And I try to get people in school by filling out Pell Grants is why I'm really concerned with the lack of trade programs in this city. We got a truck-driving school that just opened six months ago on Main Street, and when I talk to a kid about putting him in school, I gotta let him look at a two-hour bus ride to Thomas Nelson from the Denby side of town because there are no other trade programs available in this city for a kid after high school. Has anybody realized that besides me? If you try to help some of these C students get in school, you realize that very quickly. And that's a problem here, been a problem for a while. And this program here offers them free tuition as long as they got a C average. And I'm leaving a copy for you, okay?
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Next, we have up Ms. Jamie Basemore.
Good evening. Dr. Parker, I want you to bring to the attention of our city council these wonderful awards that we got on budget and finance. Please, thank you. Good evening, Mr. Chairman and members of the school board. Mr. Superintendent, I thank you for this opportunity, once again, to come before you all, to share with you all a piece of our heart, and that's Huntington Middle School. I tell you again that I've given about 25 volunteer years of service to Huntington Middle School, and whether or not that continues depends on your actions and your decisions. I am not here for the preservation of the brick and mortar of Huntington High School. I am here for our students who attend Huntington Middle School. I am here for those students that live below Mercury Boulevard, and I'm here for those who live above Mercury Boulevard because they will all attend Huntington Middle School's new STEAM program. That includes the arts and the communications magnet that Huntington had currently had. Huntington Middle School is a very necessary part of our school system. Now, there's something that we need to think about. In the school term 2019-2020, if we don't change our current plan that we have, Huntington will cease to be altogether because I do not believe that in our haste we considered that the 6th graders have been moved to other schools. If we do not bring them back to Huntington Middle School at Heritage as 6th graders, we're going to lose Huntington altogether if the new school has not yet opened. So, I want you all to think about that and think about the fact that maybe we need to go back to the planning board and get that taken care of. And as I said, we see Huntington as a future STEAM school with the arts and the communications. And it could be something like Huntington Middle School STEAM Academy. We're going to keep dreaming. We're going to get this together. We're going to all work together. I want to thank you for your time tonight, and as I say, Huntington shall rise again. Thank you.
Next up, we have Eric McCaskill.
Good evening, distinguished school board, and welcome, Dr. Parker. And we had a brief discussion, and the crux of what I'm presenting is a piggyback on what Ms. Basemore shared. I am a product of Huntington High School. Grew up in downtown Newport News without a dad, and had some issues at Booker T. Washington. Until the 5th grade, there was a Mrs. Carrie Brown, some of you might remember, Mrs. Carrie Brown, who saw the potential in me rather than a problem black boy. And as a result of recognizing the potential in me, I was able to overcome some anger issues. I was able to overcome speech impediment, and as a result, my athletic ability was discovered by the village. And as a result of that, in the preparation and the launching pad from the community Huntington High School, I was able to go to Purdue University, not only as an athlete but as a student. And all that is a result of what happened in this community. And as a result, not only was I an athlete at Purdue, I was fortunate enough to be the voice of the black students there and presented the vision of a black cultural center. And it was adopted and accepted on June 6, 1969. And next year will be the 50th anniversary, and it's a possibility, it's not official yet, that it may be named after another native of Newport News, Leroy Keys, went to Carver High School, and myself, as a result of what happened in the village. And that's why I'm here to help us to realize and maybe awaken to the fact that we need a restorative approach to school discipline. We've been punitive long enough. Fifty-nine percent of African-American boys graduate from high school. That's not good enough in America. We are improving here in Newport News, but I found that with support in the effective domain, and Dr. Parker, you said that with your mother at Norfolk State University, you came from a single home. You were able to overcome cultural and economic barriers, and that's what the standards of character in schools is all about and the raw virtues policy is all about. We just took a group of kids to New York from Aqueduct, Icaulpa, Lea Manor, and from downtown. It takes the village with virtuous adults and resources to save our children. Thank you.
We have Reverend James Brown. We have Reverend James Brown.
Good evening. I am the Reverend James Brown, also a product of Huntington High School. I would like to first congratulate the administration that exceeded Dr. Parker coming for the great work that you have done. And I feel that after meeting Dr. Parker, that the great work would continue even better than it was the last two years that you've won all these awards. I think that we have a great staff here and we're gonna do some wonderful things. Everybody's on board. I wanna talk a little bit about Huntington and the need for the school to get going. And we got these budgetary awards this evening. I'm just wondering if Huntington was in that budget for next year and not put off later. As would echo earlier, we don't want to delay the building of the school. We know what can happen when you delay things. They don't ever get done. So we want this school to get started as soon as possible because it would be an asset in our community. We have a middle, we have an elementary STEM school, we have a high school. We need the middle school. And the other thing is that this school should be built for more than five hundred students, at least seven to eight hundred students. If we're gonna transform Newport News, it begins with the education system. We need to have an education system that's gonna be applicable for our kids to grow. We need a school with all of these academic and technical skills offered to our students. Everybody will not become an engineer. Everybody will not become or sit down at a desk and work a computer. But every day we are hiring people from other parts of the country to build our buildings, to build our schools. We need to do that right here. So that technical part that we talk about, we need to have. We need to have builders growing up right here in our city and staying here. They're not gonna leave if the work is here. We got plenty of work. So let's prepare ourselves in the future to have students that can do the work right here in the city of Newport News. And if you build that school, as they say, if you build it, they will come. They will come. Good education brings students. Build a great school, a great Huntington Middle School. Thank you.
Mr. Dominique Green.
Good evening. Welcome, Dr. Parker. Welcome to all the new school board, elected school board members and the returning school board members. My name is Dominique Green. I'm actually a former student of Huntington Middle School, a school which I take great pride in, a school that has done a lot for me personally, for me and my family. My mother was an alumni of Huntington High School. This school means a lot to our community. It was at this school that I determined that I wanted to become an engineer. I was a part of the CBAF at that time called Continuous Electron Beam Accelerator Facility Program. Uh, I'm sorry, Becoming Enthusiastic About Math and Science Program, which was CBAF and now is today called Jefferson Lab. It was at this school that I had a teacher that invested a lot of time in me to make sure that I had the ability and continued to seek out the way to move past the seventh grade and into a profession in engineering. At this time last week, I was actually boarding a flight going from Warsaw, Poland, to Prague, Czech Republic at this time last week. The thing that I value the most about my visit to Prague last week and to Warsaw is that they understood the importance of history. They understood the importance of remembering not only the devastating times between 1940 and 1945 where there were massacres of populations during World War II. They understood that keeping Auschwitz there was important for folks like me who had a very touching experience there over the last week when I was there. And I saw the devastation and heard the stories that affected so many millions of people. They, now today, we're posed with a very similar challenge in a community that's already seeking to identify and understand what is the true meaning of being an African-American? What is the true meaning of becoming or living in an underserved community? And what is the potential that we have in coming out of these communities? Huntington Middle School and Huntington High School and all the folks that have passed through understand the importance of having a foundation in our community that where we can go and talk about all of the critical issues that face our community. My hope for you in making a decision about Huntington and what to do with it is that number one, you will rebuild it as quickly as possible and that you will put in place an aggressive timeline that would allow us to see very quickly the development and the building of that school for the communities that are gonna be helped by that, by the school. I know that my experience, I know that my love for the city, all of those things are attributed to just being a student going through Huntington Middle School. And I probably would be remiss if I didn't bring this up. The folks that are here today are just as caring and just as worried about Huntington because we haven't gotten an official directive on how you're gonna proceed with building the school. Uh, and one last point, and I have to say this, to my left is a friend of mine, Terry Fenner. He was our eighth grade president at Huntington Middle School at the time that I went there. And it just so happened that he's here today and I saw him. And I was the Heritage High School president. So now you have folks that understand what it's like to be leaders in this community. And we're asking you because we know that this will be a huge benefit to our community if we rebuild Huntington. So please do so and please talk about the timeline in an aggressive fashion. Thank you for your time.
Uh, next we have Rodney Hunter.
Good evening. Mr. Chairman and to the new superintendent, Dr. Parker, and to the past acting superintendent, we greet you this evening. And again, I'm glad to be here and thank you for permitting us to come to say how important it is for you, Dr. Parker, coming on board to make sure that the Huntington Middle School continues as a school because it's a great symbol of who we are as a people who struggled in the past. Poverty is an issue that's been throughout history. But I think Huntington shows and the people that came up this evening shows and represents poverty is not necessarily the issue that makes people violent or it brings a lot of destruction to a community. As WB Divorce was sharing, all of us know something of poverty. Every people knows something of poverty. The problem is we don't know enough about each other and we don't communicate enough with each other. So we really just come, and I've come from Richmond, Virginia, to say how important it is for you to hear us as a community to say, do keep our middle school, which was formerly Huntington High School. And I wanna say too how thankful I am of the alumni who continue to fight and struggle to make sure that you hear our voices loud and clear. And I think also the representatives that you heard, you heard from Reverend James Brown and you heard, we call him Dick McCaskill, all three of us are ministers. And note too now, he said, Dick said he was a problem child. Reverend Brown and I were talking a couple of weeks ago and he was talking about how problem he was as a child. But nevertheless, there was a community that embraced, nurtured, and helped us to see that we could try to do something with our lives. It was important. And I thank God that there were those people in the community and the teachers at Huntington and that community nurtured us and gave us vision. And I'm so thankful for this opportunity to say to you, continue to keep this visible symbol here in this Newport News, this great city, a very important part of Virginia. Now we are looking at the housing issue. Newport News is number five when it comes to evictions. We got a lot of problems to work on. I'm just saying, at least having a school in our community is that visible sign to help our children. I don't know if you, Dr. Parker, are related to Luttrell Parker, who goes back to the day, Edgar Parker. I don't know if you related to that group. But I'm just saying that to say, saying that to say that listen to the names that we can call people who are role models for us. And we want that to continue for the next generation. Thank you so much for listening.
Thank you. Are there any more cards?
I have no more cards.
No more cards? Um, in the audience, I was prompted to mention, I see some Boy Scouts there from Troop 158. Would you please stand and be recognized? I would ask that either you both would come up and say a few words, tell me about yourselves. And we're glad to have you here.
Uh, good evening. My name is Thomas Young and I'm from Troop 158. And this is Noah. I'm also from Troop 158. I'm gonna be a freshman in Menchurah High School, Life Scout.
Well, thank you for coming up. I know I put you on the spot, but at one time I used to be a Boy Scout as well back in the Philadelphia area. So again, it's great to see young men like you in the audience today. Those are the type of students that we have in our school system. So again, thank you for being here. We're gonna move the agenda to our consent, number three, our consent agenda. On the consent agenda, item 3.01, the minutes from organizational meeting July 2nd. 3.02, our special meeting on July 2nd. 3.03, our financial report and revenues and expense report. 3.04, our personnel report. And 3.05, the access easement adjustment to Ziegler Plumbing and Passus Middle School property. Can I have a motion for approval of the consent agenda?
So moved. Second.
You heard the motion and you heard the second. Time for the question. There being none, Mr. Chairman, please call a roll.
Mr. Brown?
Four.
Mr. Harris?
Four.
Mr. Hunter?
Four.
Ms. Solskjaer?
Four.
And Dr. Bass?
Four.
Motion carries five zero.
Thank you. Uh, we're gonna move the agenda to number, item number four, our action items. 4.01, personnel actions. Mr. Dr. Parker?
So, Mr. Chairman, we, I had a discussion in closed session to look at the administrative transfers and appointments and promotions for 2018-19. At this time, I would entertain the board's, recommend, the board's entertainment of recommendation to approve the personnel agenda, superintendent for this much. Would you, unless you want me to read the names? I will.
Yeah, let's read the names.
There you go. Transfers? Okay, under administrative transfers, we have Anthony Perry, uh, who was the principal at B.C. Charles Elementary School, who will be transferring for 2018-19 to Haydenwood Elementary School. Thank you, sir, for being here. Uh, Mrs. Miss, or Mrs., I don't wanna marry you off, Ms. Annette Walls, the principal at Haydenwood, will transfer to Hilton Elementary School. Is Ms. Walls here?
And if any of these folks are here, could you please stand as he calls your name?
Sherry Sanchez, Assistant Principal, Credenton Middle School, transferred to Heritage High School for the 2018-19 school year. For administrative appointments and promotions, we have a new director, executive director of secondary school leadership, which is Felicia, Dr. Felicia Barnett. And Felicia, did you bring any of your significant others here? I'm just, I'm just joking. I know you, you sound like you have the crowd here. So welcome. Natia Smith, Assistant Principal at Dozier Middle School, will serve as the interim principal of Credenton Middle School for the 2018-19 school year. Chris Smith, Assistant Principal, Heritage High School, will serve as the supervisor of point option. Uh, so thank you, sir, for being here. And Chris, did you bring your significant other as well? Thank you for being here. Jennifer Harnish, Assistant Principal, Kiln Creek Elementary School, has been promoted to the principalship of B.C. Charles Elementary School. Orielle Robinson Taylor, Assistant Principal, Heritage High School, has been promoted to the principal of Newsome Park Elementary School. And Orielle, please acknowledge your, if your significant other's here too. Thank you for being here as well, sir. Thank you. And your mother. Thank you for being here. Terry Fenner, a teacher at Denby High School, has been promoted to Assistant Principal at Heritage High School. And your significant other, please acknowledge yourself. There you go. Thank you for being here. Uh, so, Mr. Chairman, those are our administrative transfers, appointments, and promotions recommended to the board for your consideration and approval. Mr. Chairman, at this time, I'd like to recommend adoption of the personnel actions as read by the superintendent.
Second.
You heard the motion, you heard the second. Uh, for the question, there being none, Mr. Chairman, please call a roll.
Mr. Brown?
Four.
Mr. Harris?
Four.
Mr. Hunter?
Four.
Ms. Solskjaer?
Four.
And Dr. Bass?
Four.
Motion carries five zero. Congratulations.
Again, congratulations to all those of your new appointments. I know there's big things coming from you. Again, we would like to thank all of your family and friends who also came for your support today. So again, congratulations, and let's give them all another round of applause. All right, we'll move to action item 4.02, school board's adopted physical year 2019 operating budget. We have a motion for approval for that.
Yeah, make a motion that we approve the budget? Or do you have?
We'll hold for just a quick second here.
We're taking your lead.
Everybody keep up. So at time, can we get a motion for approval of the budget?
All right. Uh, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that we approve the budget as discussed.
Second.
You heard the motion, you heard the second. Time for the question. There being none, Mr. Chairman, please call a roll.
Mr. Brown?
Four.
Excuse me. Mr. Harris?
Four.
Mr. Hunter?
Four.
Ms. Solskjaer?
Four.
And Dr. Bass?
Four.
Motion carries five zero.
Okay. Now we'll move on to our reports and information. Item 5.01, Dominion Energy Easement at Scott location. And Mr. Webb?
Mr. Chairman, Vice Chair, members of the board, Dr. Parker, thank you for asking me to present this this evening. Uh, you have before you a GIS picture of a proposed easement at the current Scott location. Uh, the air, the box in red is a proposed Dominion power easement. It's fifteen feet wide, seventy feet long. It is associated with construction. Uh, you'll see an irregularly shaped piece of property immediately to the left of that red box. Uh, there's currently a building under construction there, which is part of the greater tech center development and Dominion needs this easement in order to provide power to that building. Uh, you have all the documents in your packet and I would ask you to consider that at your next meeting for passage and I'll take any questions you may have.
Is there any questions?
If none, thank you, Mr. Webb. Our next report, we have our CIP plan for physical year 2019-2023. Ms. Russo.
Thank you, Dr. Hunter, members of the board, Dr. Parker. Good evening. I do wanna talk this evening about the 2024 capital budget. We spoke with you earlier this afternoon about it in some, at some length. So we're having an abbreviated version for you this evening. evening. This is what we're proposing that you consider as the capital plan for 2020, 2024, by year, starting with 2020. And in 2000, let me mention first, the cost of the entire plan is 139.4 million as proposed. The first year is 54.7 million, which includes 50 million for the replacement of Huntington Middle School. Pause for cheers. No. There you go. The other things that we've included in 2020 are $2 million for security improvements, which would allow us to replace all the classroom locks on classroom doors, and then 2.7 million for bus replacements. The remaining four years are similar to things that we've included in our previous capital improvement plans. We have HVAC replacements, roof replacements. In the past, we've not included paving often in the CIP, but this year we have. We have 130 acres of pavement in the school division. It's from bus lots, parking lots, paved play areas, tennis courts, and sidewalks. We've been trying to do the paving replacements in our operating budget as money has been available, but it's really an ongoing need, and we believe we need a sustained funding source for that. So we think the appropriate place for that is the capital plan. We have ceiling replacements as well. When we replace our roofs, even before we replace our roofs, often we have leaks that damage our ceilings. And then when we do our roof replacements, often our ceiling grids are damaged as well. So we think after the roofs are replaced, it makes sense to move in with some ceiling replacements, so we're proposing that. As I mentioned, the replacement of Huntington is included in this plan in the first year, 2020. We also have recommended the building addition at Riverside, which would allow us to eliminate the existing learning cottages. There are seven classrooms that are held in learning cottages at Riverside today, and this would allow those to be eliminated. And then, as always, we have bus replacements. We have increased the amount for bus replacements from 2 million a year to 2.7, or 2.8, or 9, depending on the year. Just a little different look at that information, kind of a pie, showing what the largest slice by far is the revitalization of Riverside and the replacement of Huntington. So that's a total of 54.9 million. And then a large chunk for HVAC replacements and roof replacements, as we have had in past plans. And then the other items there, as you can see. The Huntington replacement, as I mentioned, is $50 million. You may recall in the last plan that we shared with you, the Huntington number was 37 million or 36.9, and you might wonder why it's, why it's larger. And so let me explain that. The 36.9 million dollar number was in 2017 dollars. We're proposing that this plan, in this plan, that we would bid that project in 2020. So allowing for 5% escalation in each of those three years takes the total to 42.7 million. We've also included furniture fixtures and equipment for the building, which at this point, we've estimated to be four and a half million dollars. Depending on the final design of the school, it may be some number different. And we've also included 3.3 million dollars for site development, based on the experience that we had at Discovery STEM. We've worked with Gremmon Parker Architects to put this estimate together. They're the architects that worked with us at Discovery STEM, so they have some knowledge of that area of the city. Let me mention too, that the school currently, the estimate is based on a school designed for 600 students. And so currently, we've been serving 500 students there, but it's built for 600, or planned to be built for 600. These are the HVAC projects that are proposed in the plan by school, by year. For the most part, they are full system replacements, with the exception of Cheeble Dream Academy, which we're proposing to replace the single-story section of the building. The two-story section has already been replaced. And at Gatewood Peep, that really is the senior center for Warwick High School, that we're moving from window units, which they currently have, to central air. The rest are all full-scale HVAC replacements. The roof projects are largely full-scale roof replacements at those schools. You can see which schools and which year. Ceiling replacements, I mentioned, are necessary, particularly after the roof replacements happen. And I mentioned that we need to do some paving. These are the sites where paving is necessary, and depending on the site, it may be parking lots, it may be sidewalks. And last but not least, our bus replacements. We've, in the past, a few years, been replacing about 22 to 24 buses per year at a cost of about $2 million last year. And this year, we've moved to propane-fueled buses from diesel-fueled buses. The propane buses do cost a little more. Last year, we were able to get a credit, which held us even for the cost of the buses, from the State's Department of Mines, Minerals and Energy. Those rebates, if, as long as they're offered, we'll continue to get. If not, then the buses cost about $8,000 more, those that are powered by propane. But we expect over the course of the life of the buses to see that and more in terms of maintenance cost savings. The, you can see in the last column there, the average age of the buses that are being replaced are 18, 19, or 20 years. As you, as you know, the state's recommendation is that we replace buses every 15 years, and so we are a bit behind that. If we replace 25 buses per year, as we're recommending to you in this five-year period, and for a couple of years beyond this period, we will get back to our 15-year replacement cycle. We currently have 330 buses in our fleet. We'd like to get that up to 335, and will as we receive these next buses, which we hope to start receiving tomorrow. That brings us to the summary, and I'd be glad to entertain any questions if you have them.
Are there any questions? There being none, Ms. Russo? Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Brown.
So, having Huntington in the first year of the budget, if it's so adopted and approved, means that we would move forward immediately with the building of a new, of a Huntington replacement school?
Yes, sir, as quickly as we can get it bid and awarded and under construction.
And, you know, as you mentioned, just, I guess, two years ago, we had the estimate of 36.8 million, and now today it's 50 million, and this is for essentially the same type of design. So as we're seeing that, the longer this takes, the more expensive this replacement gets.
Absolutely. We'll see escalation every year.
Every year. And so having this, acting on this and having Huntington replaced immediately is actually more cost-effective for, for everyone. Other, just question or clarification in terms of, I mentioned this earlier about, so you do, I do see Riverside's in there, but also identified in our, in our facilities study with Sedgefield. Thoughts about moving those two schools to the immediate first year as well? Has that been considered?
No, sir, we haven't, but we certainly can.
And then the, we also identified Warwick High School as a school that was a little further out in that 10-year kind of window. So I think we talked about potentially seeing something, a plan that would see it in the next sort of CIP down the road?
Well, yes, in future CIPs. It's 10 years out. It would be a few years before we get that far.
Any other questions? There being none. Ms. Russo, thank you for the report.
Yes, sir.
Item 5.03, Huntington Middle School feasibility study.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Your floor is yours.
Yes, sir. So Huntington Middle School, what's next? Here's what's next. Last year, in December, as I recall, the school board directed the superintendent to analyze the future need for and uses of Huntington Middle School. And your instructions were that we complete that work before March 1st of next year. So in order to do that, we have hired Gremmon Parker to help us with a feasibility study. As I mentioned, I don't know if I mentioned this, the design cost, 2.8 million for Huntington, was included in the 2019 budget, CIP budget, and so that money will be appropriated later in this year by council, we hope. But because it isn't available currently, we were able to find some money to do this feasibility study. So this process is underway. We've had our first meeting already. What it will include is, feasibility study will include a demographic analysis, will be, which Gremmon Parker is having done by Cropper GIS Consulting, a group from Ohio. And then they'll also do a conceptual design, which includes the things that you see listed there, a site analysis, a site analysis, project visioning, a draft educational plan and design concept. And the process is to be completed by early November, so we expect to have a conceptual design to share with you in early November. I mentioned that it would start with a school site analysis. This is a picture that the architects have provided to us of the current middle school site at Huntington. And just to show you that the kinds of things that they'll consider, you see the PM, noon, AM, that's the sun and how it moves. They'll be including all kinds of information that will help us decide where to site the school, how best to site it, based on how the lighting is. So they'll take into account a lot of, a lot of information. I do want to mention that the site is only 12 acres, and based on the state's recommendations, for a school, middle school for 600 students, we would really need 16 acres. But we'll deal with that. It means we're going to have to go up, multi-story building, and we did that at DSA quite successfully, I think. And so not an impediment, just mentioning that. Gremmon Parker's design process is one that engages the community. We have an executive steering committee that's been identified, relatively small group that will be responsible for making decisions throughout the process, and then an expanded stakeholder group. One of them spoke to you this evening. This base Moore's been asked and agreed to serve on this as a representative of the Alumni Association. School board members will be involved. Dr. Bass and Mr. Ely will be with us. Parents and PTA members from Huntington, city representatives from their planning and development department, teachers, and business partners. So we've tried to include lots of folks with, from lots of roles in the city, and will continue to add to that group as we have the opportunity. As I mentioned, the first, I don't think I did mention, the first stakeholder meeting is next week. So we'll be getting started pretty quickly. The process that Gremmon Parker uses looks a little bit like this. You see the small kind of executive steering committee, which will make, as I mentioned, decisions. Then you have this larger, expanded shareholder group, which will help us decide what the school's going to look like, what ought to be considered. They'll be asked a lot of open-ended questions by Gremmon Parker and help us kind of hone in on what the school design should look like, just like we really did for DSA. If you remember, that process is very similar. And then we will have, as need arises, focus groups. They may address things like technology, media center, or child nutrition, that's the kinds of groups that we had when we worked on DSA. So a very similar process, which we think turned out really well. The timeline, as I mentioned, next week, we'll have the first stakeholder meeting. We'll kick that off. Then there are two others scheduled for September 26th and October 24th. We do expect to have a final report from Gremmon Parker for you in early November, and we'll share that with you. And then request a joint meeting with the school board and city council to discuss the report and what it means for Huntington. So that's what's next for Huntington. I'd be glad to address any questions you might have.
I have a question.
Yes, Ms. Jones?
So the plans to, for the, the discussion for the design of Huntington has not yet started, or it's like in the process of being started?
We're in the process of kicking it off.
Okay.
But the actual design contract has not been awarded yet. We're going to do a conceptual design.
Okay. My question was actually going to be in response of the answer to my first one. It was just going to be asking, how will, technology is becoming a very large part of not only children's lives, but education across the nation. So my question was going to be then, how will that design accommodate the usage of technology for the betterment of the education in that? But since the design hasn't started yet, then that's kind of a hard question to answer. Thank you.
Everything we do will be looking at technology. If you've been to Discovery STEM, if you haven't, you should go and look at how we've incorporated technology there, but we'll certainly be doing even more of that at a middle school. Thank you.
Dr. Parker?
Just a point of clarification. We have a capital improvement budget that will move for the, to the board for action at the next board meeting in September, which has a $50 million price tag for the new Huntington Middle School, which will then forward to the city council for review and approval. They received that budget in October. However, they do not act on that budget until when?
December or January. Depends on the year.
So they will see that report, the final report of our conceptual design in November, if they, if we can get a joint meeting on the schedule, prior to approving this, the capital improvement budget, which will provide the funding for Huntington Middle School. Correct?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Any other questions?
Thank you, Ms. Russo. Next up, 5.04, back to, oh. Back to school readiness. And I think we have a host of individuals, or we're going to have one?
We do, we do. Good evening. Great question, by the way. That was a great question. Good evening, Chairman Hunter, Vice Chair Brown, board members, Dr. Parker. We are very excited to provide you with the back-to-school ready report for 2018, 2019, where you will hear updates on a number of topics: professional learning, recruitment, plant services, transportation, nutrition services, technology, and also family and community. And to start us off, we have Mr. Nichols coming to talk about professional learning provided for our adults and our students this summer.
So we start this presentation with professional learning, and we do that because professional learning in Newport News is really a jumpstart into the next school year. So we never really shut down in Newport News. Under the premise that smart is something you become, I want to show you how we have been getting smarter this summer. We hosted more than 80 professional learning opportunities this summer. That does not include one of the most amazing two-day conferences I've ever been to, which Chris Jenkins and his technology team led, and he'll tell you about. But this is outside of that, these opportunities. It included elementary professional development, including early options for teachers to come in to do their back-to-school PD earlier in the summer, which if you know an elementary school teacher, the most important thing to them starting out is working in their classroom. So they're able to trade that time and do that work. So you see pictures of that there. You also see additional PD, professional development for our ESL teachers, English as second language, continuing to get trained. You remember in our budget that we've adopted, we have additional ESL teachers to work with the increasing number of ESL students, so a lot of professional development there. Also, science provocation stations. These are two of our elementary system principals doing some sort of provocation in science, which in turn they would do with their students. So students enter the elementary day with something to kind of get their brains stimulated, and it's pretty creative, pretty open-ended, and our administrators are learning by doing. So additional trainings, trainings at all levels held by our people, completely voluntary, on the behalf of the people that are delivering the professional development, but also our teachers coming in on their own time to learn and get smarter. So really proud of the adults in this school system getting smarter this summer in order to kick off the school year. But it's not just our adults that are getting smarter, our students are getting smarter as well. And you'll know the main vehicle for that is through SPARC, our summer program for arts, recreation, and knowledge. So over 6,200 students were engaged in our SPARC opportunities. That does not include the two weeks of SPARC camps, because those are going on right now. So we will get close to, if not over, 7,000 students participating in summer programs this year. And the activities range from the Virginia Air and Space Museum to some of the sculptures for the Summer Institute of Arts. You'll see our kayaks and our outdoor education, kids on bikes, doing credit advancement. So all kinds of opportunities for our kids. So outdoor there in Jamestown right there, canoeing, and then biking in Newport News Park. So additional opportunities, you can see our youngest learners there as part of the SPARC program, as far as a kindergarten jumpstart. And then the other picture, and I actually think you can see Ms. Simons in there if you look really closely, at our kickoff for Summer Institute of Arts, where kids showed off all of their talents and skills. So summer learning, huge part of our jumpstart, and it'll be a huge part of our success in the next school year. But even bigger than that will be recruitment and where we're doing with staffing. So Stephanie Hotts will come and talk you through where we are right now.
Thanks, Brian. Good evening, everyone. We have been very, very busy. Actually, our recruiting actually starts back in the end of November, December every year. We get started as soon as we get everyone rolling, ready, and hiring for the next year. I'm really pleased to announce at this point, we have hired 249 classroom teachers for the coming school year, which represents 99% of our staff. So we are 99% staff, fully staff. So with a few more positions to go. So with two more weeks, three, almost three more weeks before school starts, we're very optimistic that we'll be in good shape for the first of the school year. Another area that we're often very concerned about, not only that there are people to receive and the kids at school, but who's going to take them to school. And so bus drivers, as you know, we've worked on a lot of that in the last couple of years. And I'm very pleased to announce that at this point, we have enough drivers in training, as well as those that have been hired, so that we will have 100% of our positions filled for the start of the school year. Very, very exciting. At this point, Keith Webb will bring you some, some information about all the work they did this summer. they did this summer.
Thank you, Stephanie. So I'm often asked, when they find out that I work at a school division, how I enjoy having the whole summer off. That is really not the case in plant services. As you can see, here's a list of some of the projects that we worked on over the summer. Most of them are finished at this point in time. We've still got some of the larger projects out there. But you can see, we've got quite a number of buildings represented in what we did, as well as a pretty broad variety of what we work on. So pictures tell, pictures are worth 1,000 words. So as Mrs. Russo noted in her earlier CIP project report, we've got some old buildings, and we occasionally find some things that we didn't know existed. So the picture on the left is a picture of a pipe that was virtually doing no good for us. We uncovered that during the course of some of the work we were doing this summer, so we got the opportunity to replace that. The center and the right picture, we're re-siding an older trailer, so, which we affectionately call learning cottages. So they don't last forever. We do have to occasionally make repairs to them. In this case, we put siding on a trailer. Because child nutrition services is continuing to serve more and more students, they have been needing additional freezer and refrigerator space to support the additional feeding that they're doing. So this summer, we added a freezer unit at Palmer Elementary School. Here you see a picture of it on the left before it was there. On the right, the unit is actually being delivered. It is now up and running and ready to receive food. So this is actually a capital project, and it's the roof at Gatewood Peep and Warwick Senior Center. That's underway. It's probably about 20% complete at this point. We don't really try to get them complete in the summer. Our experience has been, if we push them to do it in the summer, our bid prices are significantly higher, because every school in the world is trying to put roofs on in the summer. And if you can well remember, we've had a probably a good 12 inches of rain since summer started for us. So we would be behind the curve anyway. Some of the things you don't ordinarily see, on the left side is a grease trap. Again, our kitchens see a lot of use, so this is kind of an out-of-sight, out-of-mind thing, but we have to occasionally dig the floors up and replace those. The picture on the right is Sanford Elementary School, and we replaced all the casework in the building during the summer. We also did it at Carver Elementary School. Most of the cabinets in our buildings are original issue. So they don't last that long in your home, they don't last that long in our schools. And this is what the new Scott location looks like right now. Whole lot of dirt being pushed around. What you're seeing is a drainage pond associated with the entire project, and in the background is the warehouse cold storage facility. The picture on the right is the dirt being pushed around to start construction of the transportation facility. At this point, the contractor envisions the project being delivered us in the phases we asked, with warehouse and transportation moving in June of next year. Print shop and mail moving in July, and plant services and warehouse moving at the end of October, first part of November. And so they're optimistic that they can meet that aggressive schedule. I'm just going to, you know, hope that they're correct. At this time, I'd like to introduce my colleague, Chris Jenkins, who'll tell you a little bit about technology.
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Vice Chairman, members of the board, Dr. Parker, good evening. I appreciate the opportunity to stand here tonight and tell you a little bit about the exciting work we've been doing in the technology department. Summer is one of the busiest times of the year for us. We get a very brief window in time where we can get into the classrooms without disrupting the learning environment, and do some cleanup work on the computers, make sure that everything's in good working order, do some preventative maintenance. It's also a time of year when we reach out and hire some of our own students, both current students through the Career Pathways Initiative, and former high school students that have worked with us in the past, that we bring them in for the summer and, and pay them to help us get these classrooms ready for the students. Several of the initiatives that we conducted this summer involved adding student computers at different grade levels. The first of which was at the elementary school level. We went back and made some adjustments to provide equity in both the type of devices that they have and the number of devices that they have. So when you walk into any elementary school classroom in the division now, they all have a standardized configuration of computers. Moving on, the VDOE Backpack Initiative is another way that we added some additional computer capacity at our high schools. I stood here last year and told you about the exciting one-to-one initiative that we were going to conduct at Heritage High School, and we got our first year under our belts. We learned a lot of lessons and were a lot smarter than we were at this time last year. And we're ready to expand that initiative to both Denby High School and the Achievable Dream High School students. We're going to be issuing more than 1,500 Chromebooks this fall at Achievable Dream High School and at the Denby High School. One of the ways that we're going to support the students as we give them these devices is by continuing our partnership with the Sprint One Million Project. Again, I spoke to you last year about this fantastic initiative where Sprint is providing free to, free to our students, mobile devices that they can use to connect, connect these laptops to the, to the internet. We, so far this year, we have 650 students registered to receive devices. Some of them received their device last year, and they'll continue to have it. And then we'll have a big registration drive as we move closer to the end of September, the beginning of October, when we get ready to issue these devices, the student laptops. We'll be looking at issuing some more of the Sprint devices as well. And I provided for you a little heat map so that you can see how the devices are distributed throughout our city. And you can see really from north to south, we have, we have pretty good distribution in the areas, the darker the red, the higher the concentration. So you see this big cluster around Heritage High School, because they were part of the one-to-one, very, a lot of their students signed up to get the devices. So that's a fantastic partnership. It's helping us close that gap, that homework gap. A couple of, of other like infrastructure-related items, in adding these Chromebooks and adding these devices throughout the divisions, one of the things we always have to do is pay close attention to how much bandwidth we're using. And we upgraded our internet connection to a 10 gigabit per second connection. We were at six for this year. And just to give you a point of reference of where we've gone over the past three years, in 2016, we started the 1617 school year with one and a half gigs. So we're, we're at about a six or seven-fold increase in the bandwidth. And that's because we've significantly increased the number of devices that we have and the online activities that the kids are doing in the classrooms. As you're all aware, you, we were, we got funding to, for the first phase of our telephone replacement system, and we started that work at the administrative sites. We started actually in the technology building, so we could be our own guinea pigs, make sure we worked out all the kinks. The entire building, including HR and payroll, are now up on the new phone system, and it's working very well. We'll be doing the administration building, the Scott building, and then we'll be moving on to the elementary schools. At the elementary schools, we're going to be doing the work after hours so that we're, we're not disrupting learning, the learning environment. And we will finish that project out when, when the remaining funds are made available to us. I do want to take just a few minutes to talk about the past two days of just a fantastic and inspiring conference that we, the technology department held, but it was, we had teachers, administrators, support staff from all over the division. On Monday, we had 395 people, unique attendees, and today we had 355 unique attendees show up for this training. And I think one of the things that was most inspiring to me is that most of these people didn't have to be there. It was, it was voluntary. They came in, you know, during the summertime, during the last few weeks of their summer, and it's because they're so passionate about their craft that, that they're willing to give up their time. So that was very motivating for me and my staff, especially because we get to see the impact of the work we're doing, and we get to see where we're helping. So without further ado, that's the end of my presentation. I'm going to introduce Kathy Alexander from Child Nutrition Services.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Happy to be here with you this evening to talk about some things that we did in the summer, and what we're doing to gear up for this year. This past summer, we did operate 30 meal sites, where they were in our Spark programs, Parks and Rec, and then there were also open sites where community members could come under the age of 18 and have a meal with us. We served around 2,000, or 200,000 meals, breakfast, lunch, dinner, and snacks, depending on what site we operated. And we were able to employ 67 child nutrition employees to help them out in the summer. What's coming up this year, I'm very excited to announce, that we are able to add 16 more, or 13 more schools, excuse me, from last year onto CEP. So we've got quite a big list. 39 schools will have breakfast and lunch at no charge this coming year. We're hoping every year we can keep expanding till we're district-wide, is the hope. Meal prices will remain the same this year. 255, these are for the schools that are not CEP, 255 for secondary and 245 for elementary. And the schools that are not receiving CEP will receive breakfast at no charge. So they will only have to pay for lunch. And that's the end of my presentation, and I'm happy to introduce Shay Coats to come talk about transportation.
Good evening, Mr. Hunter, Mr. Brown, school board members, Dr. Parker. Like Mr. Nichols said, we never stop as a school district, but especially in transportation. During the summertime, we've transport, drove over 211,000 miles of last Thursday, so we were still going for the summer. We had over 14,000, over 14,000 man-hours of drivers and bus assistants dedicated to Spark program and other enrichment programs, along with over 130 bus drivers and bus assistants that were employed during the summertime in support of that. I was going to talk about the buses, but Ms. Russo kind of took my thunder. School buses, like I said, we expect those 20 buses start to come in this week and get them ready for the beginning of school year, and also give them out to those drivers who earn those new school buses. So we look forward to that. And get ready for the school. One of the things that we've offered over the last three years is the bus app called Here Comes The Bus. It's not only an app, but it's also on the website. We make it free to our families in Newport News, where they're able to find a real location of that bus for them. It also allows them to set up alerts on the phone if they want to know a certain radius that the bus gets in with a mile of the, the bus stop or the school, they can get, they can set up alerts on that. So again, it's easy, they follow the link there to sign up, and we work pretty well with the company, the vendor on that when we have issues for that. So late, the last I looked, we had over 11,000 accounts using that, and those accounts usually have maybe two, you know, more than just one kid attached to that, that account. Bus stop information, we getting calls daily. Probably two weeks ago, they started asking us. So on the 28th, you know, web query will be available online for parents, for families to go in there and check where their bus stop is. If they can't do that, they can also go to open house. We have the bus stop information there, and we have lead drivers for each of those schools working at the open houses to help families figure it out. One of the things that we, we do not do during the, until after the first week, we get a lot of changes that come in at the, during the first week of school. We don't make any bus stop changes until after the second, until the second week of school, as we implement those changes. Usually, in the past, probably get over 4,000 changes between when we locked the routes in until the end of the first week. So a lot of changes going on during that time. One of the things we did last year was the childcare drop-off request. We kind of made it a little simpler for the parents who couldn't get to the schools, and also for the schools, because now they can do it online, and that goes straight to transportation, doesn't have to go for the school then to us, it goes straight into transportation. So we took some of the workload off of the schools, and we can act a little quick on those things for us. And also, we had our frequently asked questions section. It was a mixture of questions that, for administrators and as well as for families. What we try to do is take the administrator piece out and send that to them separately, and just use that for the families. So we have over 35 questions and answers in there that can help parents out when they're looking for some of the information that they have questions to. So that was a good thing that we get that updated for them. We're trying to do that the last couple of years, we finally got it done this year. And the only thing on the safety I want to highlight is our yellow card system that we use for our pre-K and our kindergartners. On the first day of school, we usually let the, we let the parents use their ID cards, because a lot of them haven't got their yellow cards yet, because maybe they didn't go to the open house. So, and we got some late registrations, so we're allowed to do that. But after that, the first day, we try to get them back into the, to the routine of this is how we do things, using the yellow cards to get, receive those students off the bus. Barn, any question?
I do have a question. Yes, sir.
What happened with the extended arm that we were doing some search of that?
Oh, the stop arm? What, for the extended arm?
Yeah.
You mean the six-foot one or the camera one?
The camera one.
Well, the cameras, it's, it's still there. We're just waiting for dust to settle, and then we'll, we'll attack it again. I did find out the day that Virginia Beach, actually, Virginia Beach and the Police Department teamed up, they got ordnance pants, and they're getting over 200 cameras on their buses. I found out that today, the meeting down in Virginia Beach. So there's some we can team up with the city and, and get that initiative going.
Okay, thank you. So I'm Mr. Harris.
I actually thought we had did that last year, the cameras.
No, 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 sir. We kind of ran out of steam sometime in December. Yes, we ran out of steam. So all the things popped up of, so we'll bring it back up.
Yeah. I just want to make sure I didn't, I wouldn't want to knock it down.
No.
All right. Yeah, I got a question. And you actually, you partially answered it. The bus stops, because I have a lot of parents, you know, that were calling and go, hey, it is too dark out here for kids to be standing at particular places. So have you did recons on your initial bus stops at the time of pickup? You know, so, or have bus drivers report? So, you know, this, this area right here seems to be a little bit dark for kids.
Every, well, every, at the end of the year, we always, each supervisor goes out to their area with their staff, and they look at the bus stops. As far as going out there, well, sometime, of course, we can't do it, we'll be standing out there for quite a while, or getting out there early in the morning. But we, we do, when they, they do bring these things, that we do look at each one specifically.
And I guess what I was talking about.
Yeah.
Do you actually take the bus drivers out with, with whatever, and they run the route as they would run it?
We do a, we do a dry run next, excuse me, week after next. We do a dry run. The drivers pick up their routes, and what we have them do is go through a dry run, and then we ask them to drive the route exactly at that time, what time, 6 o'clock in the morning, you leave out, and you go through your day like that, so you can understand what's, if it's light out or it's dark out, and also kind of what the, what the traffic looks like at that time.
Okay. I asked Ms. Russo, and she, she said she was going to look at that bus as you were here. Do you know what the industry bus age is, the lifespan of a bus? Is it, because they're diesel, so is it 20 years versus 30, 35? What's considered old in the bus industry?
For me, it's 15. No, there, there, there are districts, there are districts in Virginia driving around buses, 95s, 96s, and they try to get those off, because a lot of the floorboards and that. So you do have different districts, depending where you live at, that they're able to do that. But as far as industry-wise, it's just some of those buses, they can go for a while. Yeah.
So just for the, just for the benefit of the public, so once again, August 28th is when people will be able to go online and see their, see their bus stop. If people go online right now, they'll see their bus stop from last year for their child, or what will they see if they try to?
Right now, we have, there's some, the summer school, they, they see some of the summer school old stuff in there, so they wouldn't be able to see, because things, most of the time, the bus stops will pretty much stay the same, certain neighborhoods, but they, they could change it also, based on who's going to.
To avoid confusion, people really need to wait.
They need to wait. August 28th, to go online and look at their bus stop before they start asking questions or sending requests in. As far as if, if, if a parent wants to request a change in, in bus stop, what's the process for doing that?
The process is they go to, they contact the school, where they can do exception to policy, especially, it depends what, what they're looking at. You know, I'll walk to school, from school to, from the school is four tenths of an hour, from home to your bus stop is three tenths of an hour. So we kind of take those all in consideration, but they go through the school and put it, the request, and sometime they call in straight to us, and we'll put it into our issue track and our supervisor for that area, will work that decision, then work it up through the chain between my operations guy and myself to decide what we, what we're going to do on that one.
Further, they call the school and put that request in there.
Right, because they, they didn't do changes at the school. So sometimes at the school, the school will tell them, hey, you're outside the radius already, or know that daycare is not in this zone for that, so.
And if folks are having any kind of difficulty with their Here Comes The Bus app or getting signed up initially, they should go down to the school.
No, Here Comes The Bus app, they can call the transportation department. We have a person in there that can help us. And also, because it's a third, a lot of times, they go straight to the company. It's where you can put it in there. We have visibility of the trouble tickets that come through there, so we, we kind of know what's going on with the app if we're having issues.
People can contact the transportation department directly to get their Here Comes The Bus app activated or reactivated if they're having any kind of trouble.
Right, we can help with that, yes.
Wonderful. That's, it's a great resource. I've used it ever since, ever since it came out, and really saves a lot of time and, and sometimes worry, because if the, if the bus is diverted for any reason, you can see on your phone in real time or on the web where the bus is for, for your child. So that really is a real benefit to folks in the community. I don't think people really realize how much of a benefit it is to families.
Ms. Jones?
So I have a question, and it'll kind of be more on the student side. So the students, of course, can sign up for the Here Comes The Bus to see our buses. Now, when our buses are late, because I know sometimes trouble, especially in the winter, is there a way through that app where we can see around what time another bus will be arriving, if our bus will not be arriving, or around when our bus will come?
If the substitution is done, there's a little latency within the program. With somebody, say the bus broke down on the way, if we put the, put a new bus in there, it wouldn't, the system would, that's not fast enough to catch up with, with that. So sometimes it might work, sometimes it, usually people are just calling who's, what bus is coming, so they know, you know, what number to expect.
Okay, thank you.
I have a question.
Okay, yes, and Dr. Best?
One more. Regarding the new buses, how do you determine who gets a new bus? Are they distributed throughout the city or areas or?
The buses are based on, we use, we have, before it was based on seniority, and then we had to look at some other, some other criteria. So we, first, we look at absenteeism. Who's coming to work every day to, to earn that new bus? And then the second criteria we look at is, is seniority, and then we look at safety, their safety record for buses. And what we do is you? Some people could get a bus every year based on those, those, those three pieces of criteria. If you get a bus this year, you won't get another one. So for every five years, you can get a new bus. Because if not, we'll have the same people getting new buses every year. So we try to make sure, kind of get that through the fleet.
Anyone else?
I was actually picking back up with Dr. Best's, Dr. Best's question. So if the students have a problem with their bus, for example, my bus stop last year, there were a lot of kids, so our bus tended to be overcrowded. Is there a way for students or family students to then go directly to transportation and request that a larger bus or a different bus be given?
We, we have, we will have, if a student makes a comment to their parent, we'll have parents call in to us and ask us to look at it. And we'll look at, as far as the beginning of the year is usually is a little tight, and then we have to adjust based on what new bus stops we may have. So if they call into it, we'll sign it to a supervisor to take a look at that and then get back with the, the person who called.
We'll probably consider eighteen-year-old kids also.
Any other questions? Thank you.
I'll be proud of Michelle Price.
Good evening. I'll take just a few minutes of your time to share some of the ways that we are connecting with and informing our families and our community. Our website's back-to-school page has a wealth of information to assist families with their back-to-school planning. We have registration information, school supply lists, and I must say that this year, we have a universal elementary school supply list to simplify things for families. We have calendars and schedules, and as Mr. Coats shared, that most important bus stop information, I have to say that one more time, available August twenty-eighth, and breakfast and lunch menus, free and reduced meal price applications for those schools that don't have the free lunch yet, and the My Payment Plus. So if you're at a school that is not participating in the free lunch program yet, family members may create an account, and they may pay online, add money to their student's account. They also have the ability to check and see what their student is eating for lunch as well. In addition to the website, we are reaching out to our families through postcards and phone calls and emails, newspaper ads. We have one scheduled for Friday, August twenty-fourth, and there we'll remind families of our back-to-school schedule, and we'll remind them once again when bus stop information will be available. We'll also be placing the information on Facebook and Twitter as well. Most importantly, upcoming, we want to remind our families that all of our early childhood centers and elementary schools will be hosting open houses, and our middle and high schools will also be hosting open houses and orientations for new students. So our sixth-grade student orientation is scheduled for Wednesday, August twenty-ninth, from ten AM to twelve noon, and bus transportation is provided for our students. And then later that evening, middle school students may return with their family members for our open house. So that will be held from four to seven PM. Our early childhood centers and elementary schools will host their open houses for students and families on August thirtieth from four to seven PM. And our new high school students and ninth-grade students will have their orientation on Friday, August thirty-first, from eight to eleven-thirty AM, and bus transportation is provided for students again. And for families that may be interested, we will be posting on August twenty-fifth that orientation schedule for, or the bus transportation schedule for orientation. So that information will be available on August twenty-fifth online as well. And later, after the school year gets started, our high school back-to-school night is scheduled for Tuesday, September twenty-fifth at six PM. And middle school back-to-school night is scheduled for Tuesday, October second at six PM as well. So all families are invited back to, once the school year gets, kicks off, to learn a little bit more about the academic program at their child's school. And of course, we do all of this in preparation for our first day of school, which is Tuesday, September fourth, and we will be welcoming back about twenty-eight thousand students for another successful year of learning. So that concludes our back-to-school report, and if you have any questions, we'd be happy to entertain any remaining ones you have.
I have just a couple of questions. So my first one deals with actually the technology. So on behalf of mainly the high school students, I have, my biggest question is, will the upgraded internet bandwidth mean that the internet will be faster?
Hi, Ms. Jones.
Hi.
It's a great question. So the, the short answer is yes. It will mean that we'll have faster internet connections. And we've also been working, so it's not just about the internet, to get from building to building or to get to the internet. We've also increased the speeds between the buildings. So we believe we're going to find that, that there's an increase in performance. If you, if you have a challenge in any particular area of your building, please make sure that you let your teacher know so that they can submit a work order, and we can have somebody come out there, because you know, sometimes wireless needs to be adjusted. So we always want folks to let us know when there's a problem, so we can go out and do a site survey and, and get everything working the way it should be.
My second question was actually about the new lunches, the, with the high schools. Sorry. So now that some of the high schools have added free lunch, a lot of the times, fee waivers for college applications or SAT waivers, those are determined by whether or not the family has a free reduced lunch application already in. So for the high schools that already have free lunch offered, will there be another way for them, the high school students, to know that they are eligible without having to go through the whole turning in their tax, their parents' tax forms to certain organizations?
Yes, there is. We still collect, they're, it's called directly certified, so we have a list of students that qualify for free meals based on other benefits they receive, like SNAP or TANF, and so we have a list of that. And so you do receive, families would receive a letter saying that they received that, and there is a box that they can check to turn in to their guidance counselor for those fee waivers.
Thank you. Thank you guys both for answering my questions.
Any other questions? Well, I want to thank you on behalf of the board for all of those wonderful reports. We are going to continue on your package and your agenda, five point oh five, attendance report, the membership report, construction report. Any comments about those? There being that, we're going to move to item number five point oh eight, comments from our superintendent.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. First, I'd like to say, I wrote down several questions. Thank you, board members, for some of the questions, which my, I know my staff really appreciate, some things that we need to continue to communicate. As you can see, we're doing a lot of great work behind the scenes preparing for the next school year. And I, I too thank the staff for the report this evening and the, the level of depth and, and the great news with, around the work that's taking place in Newport News. I wanted to make some quick comments regarding some, some of my whereabouts. I do have an entry plan that's, that has been released. It's available online and on Twitter, in hard copy if you need it. But I outlined my first one hundred days in the school division and what that work will entail. As I promised the board and the community, when I first came here, my, my objective is to look, listen, and learn over the hundred days so that, so that myself, with the support of my staff and the school board, will be able to paint, communicate a clear vision for moving our division forward in alignment with our strategic plan. So that work is, is definitely underway. I really appreciate the Huntington community being here this evening to see how we plan to move forward. We now have a communicated plan for our, for our, for moving forward with our process, not only with the community, but also with the city. And we hope this is a partnership, the beginning of a partnership in communicating. We're coming to you. That first meeting will be held at the STEM Academy on the South Side, so that we can make it accessible. And we, we want to really start doing the work necessary, so that in November, when we're ready to, with the board's blessing, when we're ready to sit down with the city, that we have a, a plan in place that has the, the wishes of the community as well as the instructional vision of our, of our educators. Thank you. So I, so I have been, been doing a lot of listening, and also, I just want to focus on the children of, of the Huntington community and, and just, just address that real, real quick. I have, behind the scenes, we've met with the principal, not only the principal of Huntington Middle School, but also the transitional teams there to ensure that the kids are going to get a quality education next year. While we're doing all this planning, it's important, very important, that we continue to focus on the children and make sure that they're getting a good education, because I do believe that they're going to, just as you're sitting in the audience tonight, they'll be here twenty years, thirty years from now, saying, I was in, I was in Huntington, in the Huntington community, and I support our schools. And we need to make sure they get a good education during this transition as well. So we're committed to doing that. And if, if there are any issues, thank you. If there are any issues, I want to hear about those. I do, I have launched my Ask the Superintendent email address. It is available on the website for, for your access. You also can call if need be, but reaching me in, in written form through, through my email address, Ask the Superintendent. It is listed online, and, and we review those daily. So if we hear any comments, any concerns from any parents, any members of the community during this transitional process or throughout the year, I would like to know about those and make sure we're taking care of your kids. I was fortunate enough to go to the Newport News Shipbuilding presentation on August eighth. And just as Mr. Stan, I think his name is Stansel, mentioned earlier this evening, Newport News Shipbuilding is one of our largest employers in, in this, in this area. And it surprises me to know that they are providing innovative ways to employ individuals coming straight out of high school, or whether you want to attend a Newport News apprentice school. So similar to what Mr. Stansel's comments tonight, and I wish he was here to, to hear that, I'm, I'm really pleased to see that Newport News Shipbuilding has a program where you can act, actually access the work commu, the workforce program there through, whether it's welding, whether it's pipe fitting and other areas, with, with no charge. So similar to what he was saying, we've already, I was at a presentation just last week, seeing exactly what he was talking about. So I, I want to know that we have these opportunities, and the, the key is, how can we get our kids connected to the opportunities? And that's something we'll, we'll be working on in the, in the near future, because we have jobs here, and we need to make sure our Newport News kids are, are accessing those jobs and those opportunities. I was fortunate enough to go to the Innovate Conference this morning to see some of our educators on their own time, on a hot day, attending sessions and workshops around technology and how to, how to better engage students, how to make sure their students are learning in, in, in the digital world, learning a lot of new tricks. And, and I'm fortunate to see that we're putting out a lot of devices this year in the hands of students. So we're moving, we're moving forward with our digital initiatives, and we're training our teachers to be more engaging, more innovative in the classroom, and I was just surprised and happy to see, there was actually people there directing parking, because there was not enough parking in front of, in front of Gilt-O-Sleeve Elementary, Middle School. So with that being said, it was a packed house, and I would just thank our teachers, thank our administrators, our technology staff, our volunteers. There were, there were student volunteers there as well, who were running the Innovate Conference. And finally, I just want to say, I'll have, I'll be fortunate to, to introduce myself to quite a bit of new teachers on Thursday who are coming, who are just arriving to Newport News City Public Schools, and we'll welcome them on Thursday morning. And I encourage any board members, if you're available, to, to be there, so as we talk to, talk to them and show them why we feel we are premier school division, and they're joining a great team. So looking forward to the rest of the week, and I thank you, Mr. Chairman, for the opportunity to speak.
Well, thank you. And we will continue with the agenda at this time. Do we have any cards from the audience?
I have no additional cards.
There being that, we are moving on to item number seven, matters by the school board. And first, we'll have our student representative, Ms. Maria Jones.
Well, I'd like to thank the school board for the recognition today. It was awesome. And I'd like to just say, for the upcoming school year, I'm really excited to be serving not only my high school community, but as all the other students, as well as the general community for Newport News in the best that I can. I also want to bring to attention in the school board, we, this past weekend was the National American Miss Teen Virginia Pageant, and I did attend, but I was also fortunate enough to meet another young lady who graduated from Thimby High School this year, who also did attend. And it just shows really that NMPA students are committed to being the best that they can be, both in and outside of high school. And so I found that really great. To be named a state finalist in this pageant is an honor that has gotten numerous young girls across the nation various scholarships. So it's a huge thing. And I also just want to thank the people who were here for me today. I know Ms., Ms. Sheehan Smith, who left earlier, she was here representing for me, as well as anybody else in the audience, Ms. Adams and Mr. Nichols. Thank you guys for being here. That is all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Harris?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I will keep this short and sweet. Congratulations to all the new hires and transfers. I enjoyed the admin reports. It was short but informative. I really appreciate that, and also the format. Also, thank you to the Huntington alumni for coming down and continuing to let us see your presence and hear your voice. I really appreciate your efforts. Also, I'd like to thank my peers here and the superintendent for a great work-study this weekend. I had a wonderful time. I, I learned a lot. Also had a chance to intimately learn more about my peers on, on the school board, especially the two new hires and, and other individuals that I've worked with the last two years. So I really appreciate the camaraderie and the efforts. Last but not least, just remember that we are all here for the kids in the Newport News Public School Division. Regardless who you are, where you work, work at, just remember, we either teaching, coaching, or mentoring our kids. And success and failure lies at the leadership. So just remember that, or we as board members remember that, that everything we do is for the kids. All right? Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Harris. And Dr. Best?
I too would like to say thank you to everyone for coming out, for those that are speaking, and for those that are tuning in. I'd like to congratulate everyone that was promoted or moved to different schools. I wish everyone much success for this school year, and I am certainly looking forward to a great school year. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Sarah's laws?
Well, it is no secret that Newport News is busy during the summer. I thoroughly enjoy going to Palmer Elementary, seeing the Spark program, going, going to the Bloom Conference for girls. The things that our students are doing, them wanting to be involved with the school system during the summer, that's curious. That's really remarkable. So I definitely need that. Also, let's see, congratulations, of course, to our new hires and to the, the teachers who we're going to actually meet on Thursday and the ones we had this evening. But I do want to give a special shout-out to our summer graduates. So we actually had a meet, meet service for them, and then the following weekend, the school districts are all invited to the GED graduation. And that's And that's really closing that gap, that's getting that last of those percentages that we're not capturing, and that was really a rewarding opportunity to participate there. And I thank you to our staff, you guys are amazing, hearing their report, I've already written that down to say thank you to the staff for getting us ready for back to school, but to hear your reports, we're in there, and thank you for hanging in there with us.
Well, thank you. Vice Chair, Mr. Brown?
Wonderful. Well, it's been a really busy summer and this has been a very, I think a very successful summer and very exciting. We had the opportunity to attend the summer graduation and that was a really momentous occasion, saw a lot of students finishing summer graduation, hats off to all the staff that really work so hard to encourage and mentor the students to bring them hope and tell them never, never to give up and, and persevere and push all the way through. That's always so encouraging and never, people ask all the time, what is your favorite thing about being a board member and it's going to those graduations? Because that is really what this is all about in the end, is to see them go across the stage and the looks on their faces and then the hope that's in their hearts and in the community as well. Attended the GED graduation ceremony, want to thank Hampton High School for hosting that, that event. That really caps off for me, that kind of event, caps off the summer, looking very much forward to when you see the kind of numbers that we saw represented at both those events, what kind of graduation numbers we're going to see and the level of accreditation we're going to see as we close out our data for the year and get to see those reports in, in just a few months. So I'm really looking forward to it and that's why I'm really excited about everything that's going on this summer. I also had an opportunity, I want to thank Delegate Antioa Warwick High School for giving us a tour, we had a chance to go around and look at various school hardening initiatives and have some discussions there, and I see that in the capital budget, that some of the things that we talked about are in the budget in terms of those, those door locks, and so I appreciate that work being done and that, and that being implemented in there as well. I'm looking forward to the new teacher event and greeting the new teachers that are coming to work with us and, and wishing them a great career, I know they're going to have a great career here in Newport News. I think that in recruitment, this is probably, since I've been on the board at least, this is the most successful recruitment report that I've received. So really just hats off to the, the staff and the, and the administration for doing a really fantastic job of recruiting in a, in a time and a year when we anticipated teacher shortages, that we have 99% of our positions filled, 100% of our bus driver positions filled, and, and that's no accident, that's a concerted effort by, by everyone. And finally, just wanted to share with everyone that I'll be doing, along with Representative Sharon Scott, I'll be at her town hall event on the 27th, and that'll be a chance for the community to do, we'll do a back to school type report, to ask questions and prepare for the, the upcoming school year, so if there's any questions or concerns, I'll be there at the Demby Community Center, 7:00 p.m. that night to, to address the community and, and to talk. And I'm just really excited about the upcoming year and everything that I know we're going to accomplish, I want to thank the chairman for his, his vision of focusing on vocational education, focusing on job skills and work readiness, and I think that the focus on that this year, that being a theme for us, I appreciate that vision and we're going to accomplish some really great things and, and making it pay for kids, so, so when they're finishing school, that they're going into jobs where they're able to support their families.
Thank you. So we've come to the evening, and again, as I stated, for my last four years and started this year, it will be no difference, there are great things happening in Newport News Public Schools. Ditto to all those things that my fellow board members have stated, congratulations to those who've got promotions, those who are transferring, to our summer graduates, about 55 of them graduated, the parents are more excited than any other parents they Again, thanks for the colleagues for a great kind of workshop that we had over the weekend, we did some real camaraderie, and again, my focus this year, I, I've heard it, I wish Mr. Stansel was here, and I do adhere to Huntington, but if you have never heard me say this before, I'm, this is something I've learned in my new employment, but in talking to, I get an opportunity to talk to a lot of the business, that are here, and we asked them, I keep hearing says, our kids, we can't find the students, we can't find the students. Well, it's 757, the whole entire 757, it's a blue collar town. It's a different type of blue collar town, it's not your mom and pop blue collar town, but it's technical, it's modeling and simulation. And so as I heard someone say, as I'm, I'm hearing tonight, is that everyone's, not everyone's going to go to college. So I know we say college, career, and citizen ready, maybe we should say citizen, career, and college ready, because that two and two college thing is a wonderful thing in a time of, I'm coming from a world of finance, you know, go to a two-year community school and then able to go and matriculate to a four-year school if you want to do that. But if we hire, if we go and train these students, get them skilled for the jobs that we have here, they would stay here. And these jobs do pay 42, 52, 62 in some cases, you know, with a one or two certifications. And so hopefully that we're on the right track with this Huntington, Huntington Middle School, Huntington STEM Academy, STEAM Academy, Huntington Community Academy, Huntington Best Academy in the state of Virginia. But I think this board, I know we've got new leadership and we have, he's got support from the leadership that was already here. Thank you to our previous interim superintendent who did a wonderful job taking us up to this point, and the staff at Mary. To Ms. Russo and her team, Mr. Coach and his team, Ms. Alexandra and her team, HR for having us at 99%, and if that goes again, Mr. Brown, you know, we stuck off, we stuck to it and we got them 4%, 4% raises really make a difference across the board when you're trying to hire people. It's a lot easier to recruit folk, and once they get here, they really don't want to go. I mean, Newport News is a school of options, man, we can do anything, if you would like to fly, we got the academy, you know, we got aviation, if you like to, you know, you like sciences, if you like to do medical, you know, we, you know, we're going to do some entrepreneur stuff down the road, and I want to tell you, if you want to go into a Vo-Tec Huntington, four or five years from now, I'm hoping that we're doing a ribbon cutting, and, and everyone from Huntington will be there, along with all the other businesses. So that being said, I'm looking forward to an exciting and very, very successful new year. So we're open at arms and we're waiting for the kids, I'm quite sure we'll be attending several schools on opening day. That is one of my favorite times of the year, only followed by the graduation. So that being said, I'm going to adjourn the meeting at this time. Have a wonderful evening.